June 27th. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove.
Present.
Mr. LaFurla.
Present.
Mr. Gesire.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present. Uh, now if you all please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and now we will have Dr. Bruckner. We are proud of our schools and introductions.
Thanks very much.
Yes.
We are really proud of our schools, and before I tell you why we're so proud of our schools, let me make a couple of introductions. I am privileged to introduce to you someone you know, Dr. Vicky Morello. Our incoming superintendent is here tonight as a guest in our, in our audience. So, Dr. Morello, welcome. That means everyone has to be in their best behavior, okay? Okay. I want to introduce three other people who are here, and we're gonna, we're not gonna take away their thunder right now, but we're so excited that they are here. First of all, Joel Dirks is here, and he is the Executive Director of West Central Community Action. Joel, wave at us. Thank you. And he is joined by Lavinia Kuver, who is the Head Start Director, and Trista Fusselman, who is the Board President. And we are gonna tell you some wonderful things going on with Head Start, but we're so pleased that they joined us at the board meeting. But now to the very important events tonight. I pledged when I was given this opportunity to be superintendent to keep the faces of children in front of the board, and even in our summer meeting, we have some faces to put in front of you. Let me first of all tell you about some wonderful State Track and Field and Drake Relay honorees tonight that, who are with us. Council Plus was very well represented at the prestigious Drake Relays and at the State Track and Field Meet this spring. We're pleased that five of our student athletes earned honors, and we want to recognize them here tonight. As I call your name, would you join me at the podium to receive your Student Star Award, which is recognition as our highest award that we give to students. Recent graduate Cecilia Yale has a softball game tonight, so she is not able to join us. Cecilia earned sixth place in Discus at State, representing Thomas Jefferson High School. Also earning sixth place in Discit, but at, Discus, but at the Drake Relays is soon-to-be senior Josie Starner. Josie's here. Soon-to-be junior Cameron Baker earned seventh place at the State Track Meet in Discus. Graduate Daniel Carey earned honors at both meets with an eighth, eighth-place finish in the long jump at the Drake Relays and a fifth-place medal at State in the 800 meter. Daniel. Finally, we are pleased to again recognize soon-to-be junior Darby Thomas for her high level of performance in the long jump. She earned top honors at the Drake Relays and was runner-up at State. Congratulations to all of you on these accomplishments. They not only work well, run fast, throw hard, but they look wonderful. Best wishes to our graduates and to our returning students whom we will look forward to watching and cheering for in the future. And congratulations and thank you to parents and coaches for being here with us. And I'm very eager to reintroduce you to Mia Kawamitsu. Mia was here last month with other students who earned honors at the State History Day Competition held on May 8th. She and a few others then competed at National History Day in Maryland earlier this month, and we all were watching tweets, especially from her coach, Deb Masker. Mia led this year's group of student participants in the national competition from Iowa for her second place in the country, finish in Senior Individual Documentary Category. Her project, you probably remember, is A Ray of Hope, focusing on former Iowa Governor Ray and his work with Vietnamese refugees in the 1970s. Mia, congratulations to you. And congratulations to your proud parents for being here and supporting you. We're so pleased. We knew you could do it. Well, Mrs. Masker kept telling us you could do it. So, Board of Education, on my behalf, thank you very much for taking time in our board meetings to always let us honor students who do so well, and to give them a board honor. Our Student Star Award is, is the high point of the evening. Now for the rest of the meeting.
Dr. Bruckner, if you could just stay put for a minute. Use your dad voice. Come on, Troy.
So, we have two small gifts from the board for your hard work over the past 10 years, and for many of us, for David especially, where it's been all 10 years that he's worked with you.
He should get the award.
He should get the award. I agree. No.
That is wonderful.
Yeah, so it's got all the schools in Council Plus, and then Change for Good, a quote from there, which is Martha's favorite quote, and I think, and then there's something that we had, Diane had made. So, there's a book that has different moments from your time here, and we're gonna have that tomorrow night at the retirement dinner, so people can sign it.
Thank you very much.
You appreciate your, all your hard work.
Thank you.
I don't know if any board members want to say anything. Surely can't. Can wait till after.
About to get put on the spot. Um, our district is not, our district is where our district is at now because of you. That is a fact known across the state of Iowa. So, we are very grateful that you were here for 10 years, and we wish you well, and we hope you spoil Bob and see your grandchildren and take care of your family and you.
Our district is where we are because seven school board members, including Dave, gave me a chance. They took a chance on a brand-new superintendent, and at times I faltered, and they didn't fire me, and at times I faltered. They kept me going. I had a great team. Many of them are here tonight, but you, one person doesn't do it, and one person can't do it without other people supporting. So, I am honored. My son says that, Mom, they're giving you these things because they really do want you to leave now. So, no, I don't get any, get any of the support at home that I'm getting here, so I'm not used to it, but I will treasure my memories. Believe it or not, this is the longest time I've ever stayed in one position, ever, 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 and when I came, I didn't think it was gonna be for this long. I didn't really have it in mind, but it's been a wonderful opportunity, and, and you guys have just been great, and I can't, I keep, there's nowhere to go from up, from this, but thank you so much. I will treasure this forever, and I will treasure this and keep it alive if I possibly can.
That was cute. That was really cute.
Bob will take care of it. Bob will know how. Congratulations to all of our recipients. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting if you like, or now would be a good time to. Bye, guys. Thanks for coming.
Very good. Okay, so now we need approval of our agenda.
I move approval of our agenda.
Their second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, and our agenda's approved. We have approval of our minutes for the regular meeting of May 23rd. Is there motion?
We have approval of the minutes from May 23rd, 2017.
Thank you, Chris. Their second?
Second.
Susan, is there any discussion on those minutes?
Is it me, or is the volume down?
The volume's a little low, but it was high that one time.
Yeah, we fixed it. I think we fixed it.
There's no changes or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, and the minutes are carried. Now we come to a public participation portion of our meeting. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board regarding agenda items or other matters of concern. We have two, or three individuals who have asked to address the board before the meeting, and I will ask who all is here, but I think all three may be here. I'll start off with maybe Amber Ingham. Amber here? Oh, it's part of third. Mr. Shea, I see him back there. With an update on Crescent. And just please say your name and address, and then.
I'm Sean Shea from Crescent. 2015 old Lincoln Highway in Crescent, Iowa, before the bridge that was out. You know, and I guess I've, I've sent a letter in. I guess I'm looking for some kind of acknowledgement of whether I should proceed with my concerns in promoting Crescent School, and I would like to just give you an update on where we're at. And I'll pretty much read the letter that I sent to a couple board members. You know, we've, we formed this group to make Crescent Elementary sustainable, and it's a diverse group of people that have really pulled together to do what we feel is an uphill battle. And I'd rather be doing a lot of things. This is one of the most distressful things I could do, is to come in here and speak in front of this group of people and try to convey and represent my grandchildren. It's a, but I would rather be doing a lot of other things, playing with them is one. You know, we put together a marketing plan. Here's the update part. We put together a marketing plan. We've gone door-to-door promoting Crescent School and doing the things that we need to do to make that school viable, and the perception is, is that Crescent's being closed. Year after year, we've had a move to close Crescent. You know, and, and it's been a continued effort. And after we came in and, and got the vote from the board to support Crescent, you know, we've, we, the meeting afterwards, we heard that the administration is not gonna meet with our group. They don't want to meet with us, and they don't want to give us preferential treatment. We're not asking for that. We're asking for fair and equal treatment, the same as any grade school in the system. All's we wants, the same things. And you are the representatives of our children, and I'm asking you to help us out in Crescent. You know, there are some things that could be done to help us get this marketing thing off the ground and promote Crescent. One of the things we need, support from the board. We'd like a public statement, and, you know, each one of us heard something different at the meeting when the vote was taken. And what we heard was Crescent would stay open for a year, or we have indefinite support. Well, when we're going door-to-door with the new children in Crescent and trying to recruit them for Crescent School, I go, oh, it's closing. Our kids are going to Underwood. So, it's difficult. I, I'm, I'm here to ask for a letter of support from the board that Crescent stay open indefinitely. And one of the minor things, which, we're not listed in the phone book, we're not listed on the website, Crescent Elementary is not listed as a part of Council Plus Public Schools, and we're working hard to make, we want to feel like we're part of the system. And I don't want to go over plowed, plowed ground again. You know, you've heard this before, some of it, but pre-K is a natural feeder for children to Crescent School. Can we get some support on a pre-K program? We're talking about building our own playground area, and we're, we're getting donations for that, and we're the only grade school in the system that doesn't have a pre-K program. Matter of fact, Children's Square has a pre-K program. Crescent doesn't. I'm asking for support. You know, and I've, I've talked with several administrators. You know, there was talk about changing the boundaries after the discussion of closing Crescent. There are some things that could be done on boundaries that could enhance Crescent's enrollment and help us with the uphill battle we're going through. And another thing I'm interested in, just as a side note, I would make, like to make a formal request tonight for a copy of the current budget and the two previous budget years. Not specific parts of it, or I don't have a request. I want the whole budget with all supporting documents, and I would like to go through that and understand the evolution of how Crescent got where it's at and why we're where we're at. Now, we're asking for help, and, and that's what I'm here to do. Just asking you for some help to make Crescent viable. It's, it's the center of our community. It's not just a grade school that's not profitable. It's the center of our community, and that's what I'm asking for, and I'd appreciate your help in any way I can get it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. And now Bob Hanson had asked to speak.
Hello, Bob Hanson, president of the CBA, teacher at AL. I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank Dr. Bruckner for her 10 years of service to our students and our district and our community, and though we may not have agreed 100% of the time, we were very appreciative of her openness, her willing to listen, and her communication with us. We look forward to working with our new superintendent, Dr. Morello, and working forward and keeping our district growing, and we just wanted to say thank you very much, and on a personal level, thank you for everything you've taught me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. And I'll ask once again if Amber's here, and if Amber's not here, I can, if she comes in.
She expressed that it was hard for her to be here by 6:30. We expressed that this was the time to speak, so if you would let her speak, if she comes in, that would be great.
Mr. Arthur, there was some comments that were made that Crescent isn't even listed on, and I'm not trying to engage conversation with the, Mr. Shea, but I just wanted to point out that I pulled up on my phone the Council Plus website, and Crescent Elementary School is most certainly represented on the website, listing opportunities, the principal, all of those things that are, that, that, but I just wanted to point that out, that the statement was not factual in its nature, that Crescent Elementary School is listed on the Council Plus Community District's website.
Sure thing. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Right there. There we go. And please step up and state your name and address, and then you have three minutes and wish to speak.
I'm Stacy Brown. My address is 415 Fuller Avenue, Council Plus, Iowa. So, I teach kindergarten at Bloomer Elementary, and I'm here tonight asking you to consider a few things before approving the changes in employee leave protocols for 2017, 2018. Last January, I lost my daughter and mother within a week of each other. At that time, I was able to use nine and a half emergency days. I'd already used half a day to be with my mother for an outpatient, patient brain surgery. After contacting both Toby Reese and Greg Anderson, I was told by Greg that my emergency leave was all I had left for the death of an immediate family member. At the time, I was dealing with the deaths of both my daughter and mother, and the last thing I needed was the pressure of figuring out how much time I could take to heal. Dr. Bruckner then called me and assured me that there was, that she was there to help me and asked me what I needed. She granted me an additional few days of leave, and I'm so thankful to her for her kindness and compassion. Thank you. She has also since emailed me to see how things are going. So, the proposed policy states, in the event of the death of an employee's spouse, legally-recognized domestic partner, parent, child, grandparent, grandchild, sibling, stepparent, stepchild, parent-in-law, or sibling-in-law, three, three consecutive calendar days of bereavement leave will be provided. The three consecutive calendar days will begin with the date of the death or the date of the memorial service. Employees may be required to provide documentation. Under the new leave policy, employees would have the three calendar days of bereavement for the death of a close family member. Mercedes passed away on a Friday. So, under this new policy, since it says calendar days, I would have had to return to work on Monday. Her memorial service wasn't until Thursday, so if those were the only three days I got, I would have had to miss my daughter's memorial service or not get paid for it. My mother passed away on the same day as Mercedes' memorial service, Thursday, so I would have, again, had to return to work on Monday and missed her memorial service as well. I understand that there may be other types of leave that could be used. If someone has personal days left, they could use those. I use my personal days for religious holidays each year, so I'm not able to save them. I'm also under the understanding that if we feel we need additional days on top of the three days we are given, that we can use employee assistance to make an appointment and be diagnosed as needing, diagnosed as needing more time off. So, in that three days of shock, despair, fog, numbness, whatever emotion you can imagine, I'm supposed to figure out how to get an appointment with an employee assistance doctor, see the doctor, get the paperwork to HR, plan a funeral, and get through this tragedy without losing my sanity. I just don't feel that I should have to see a doctor to tell me I've just gone through hell of losing my child, so I need more than three days off of work. A funeral cannot even be planned in three days, depending on the way a person died, and then to expect someone to get over it so quickly by coming back to work after only three days is unimaginable. We have to teach children, we have to be positive, normal, energetic, happy adults in these children's lives. We are to be doing what's best for our students, and I just don't see how grieving parents or a spouse, for that matter, can go back to work and do what's best for our students so soon after a tragedy. Losing a child or spouse is, I don't feel the same as losing a grandparent or a sibling-in-law as they're all listed under the, you know, the same. We only have to grieve. We not only have to grieve, but we have to plan the funerals and complete whatever legal work is necessary. I would ask that later tonight, when it comes time to vote for the new leave policy, that you would please take another look at the bereavement leave. I had a really nice conversation with Dr. Bruckner today. She was willing to listen and work through some possible changes to the new policy. One suggestion was to change the wording to the following. In the event of the death of an employee's spouse, legally-recognized domestic partner, parent, child, or stepchild, up to five days of bereavement leave will be provided per incident. Then, in the event of the death of an employee's grandparent, grandchild, sibling, stepparent, parent-in-law, or sibling-in-law, three days of bereavement leave will be provided. Another alternative might be to include the death of spouse, legalized domestic partner, child, stepchild, or parent in the 10 sick days that can be utilized for the care of a family member. The wording could be changed as follows. Up to 10 sick days per year may be utilized by an employee for death or care of an employee's spouse, legalized domestic partner, child, stepchild, mother, father, or legal dependent. The board may require a physician's statement substantiating any claim for sick leave to care for a family member. I pray that nobody ever has to endure the heartbreak that I felt in January, but if I, they do, I hope that they can count on Council Plus Community School District to provide them the time and support they need to get through what could be the most difficult time of their lives. Thank you. And I do have, we printed off the bereavement leave and sick leave, if you would like to read it. Cause I'm sure I, like, the ones that we print, we came up with.
Yeah, I have the copies of the ones you and I talked about.
Do you have these?
And I'm gonna share them with them when we get to that part of it.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak or address the board? All right. Thank you very much. Now we come to student achievement. Update on preschool partnerships.
We are thrilled to have an update on preschool partnerships, and I think Joan Crowell with the supporting partnership of Corey Wirthman are gonna share some wonderful, some wonderful news, and I, he's such a shy little guy there, I forgot to introduce Leo McIntosh, who is here representing the YMCA, which is one of our new partnerships also, so, Leo, sorry. You were hidden by all those kids. Blended right in. You didn't know they were gonna leave, and Vicky's still trying to figure out, where did they go?
Good evening. It's my privilege to introduce you tonight to Joan Crowell. Joan is a familiar face to many in Council Plus, but we've been blessed to have her leadership this year as a consultant for preschool, and Joan has done a fantastic job of helping us usher in some great quality improvements in preschool. She thinks that she has to spend some additional time out of state, so we don't get to have her services next year, but we, we have secured the services of Tracy Matthews, who will be joining our team next year in preschool, and Joan has graciously agreed to help us out a little bit here and there, so Joan has all of the important information for you guys tonight about some expansion of early childhood programming at Council Plus.
Thank you, Dr. Bruck, or Dr. Wirthman and Dr. Bruckner. It's really been my privilege and honor to get to work again with the Council Plus Schools returning home, has been very exciting for me, and to get to work in preschool, the area that I'm most passionate about. So, I'm really excited tonight because we're expanding and we're growing, and we're growing in new ways and opportunities, so let me get to that very quickly. First of all, I just want you to know, I read some recent research, and it just solidified in my mind the direction that we're headed. Top researchers that study early childhood education in the United States came together in Washington recently, and they produced a report on the state of scientific knowledge and pre-kindergarten effects. And when you look at these bullets that I pulled out of the report, you'll find that the efforts that we are putting together in our preschool programming here in Council Plus Schools align with those key findings, and also reiterate the importance of preschool programming and the effect that it has on children long-term, getting off to a very secure start as they enter school. So, with that being said, let's get to the most exciting part tonight. We are encouraged by the Iowa Department of Ed to reach out and build community partnerships. We have one existing partnership, and that is with Children's Square USA, and that started a couple years ago. We have been working the last two years, I'd like to have Leo McIntosh, the Executive Director of the YMCA. Leo and his team have been working diligently for two years to work on the Iowa Quality Preschool Program standards. That is one thing that we have to assure as a community school district, that any community partner that we want to reach out and partner with can meet those assurances to guarantee that they will continue under our umbrella as a partner to be fully accredited by the Iowa Department of Ed. And I'm really excited to say that Leo and his team have met those assurances. And we're forging a new community partnership with the YMCA this fall. And I can't think of a better opportunity to start the new partnership than the excitement of them opening up their new facility soon here in the fall. So we're really excited about having that. Leo and his team believe in the same quality programming. They have moved into using the curriculum that we're moving, using the same assessment. They even hired one of our student teachers that student taught in one of our preschool programs. So looking forward to great opportunities that more children in Council Bluffs will be served in a quality preschool program. And the interesting thing about this partnership with the YMCA is Leo's team at the Y can typically serve children that maybe do not follow the, necessarily all of the criteria, the umbrella of our most needy children. So it reaches out further and provides opportunities for even more children through this partnership. So I want to thank Leo. We're looking forward to it. Great start.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Really excited to talk about.
It's on. It's just on low. I just had a quick question for you. So the YMCA setting, there was a daycare at Mercy Hospital called Little Blessings.
The Little Blessings?
And that has closed, is my understanding. And those children are being transitioned to a daycare in the Y? Is that?
And I, Leo may be able to, they're expanding in multiple ways. Our partnership will just specifically be for four-year-old preschool classroom.
So will those children have an opportunity to participate in that as well, or do they have to qualify? Are there certain qualifications to participate in preschool?
It will be the YMCA's selection criteria that they use for four-year-olds, as long as they meet the requirement of the state law being four years old by September 15th. And then anything that the YMCA has for their criteria for eligibility.
And we currently are managing CHI daycare. We took over the three CHI daycares in Omaha, as well as the CHI Little Blessings daycare. So our hope is that when we open the new facility, it will be full. We've got about 30 spots available at the current CHI daycare, along with the 51 that we currently have at ours, so.
Awesome.
But the program is specifically for four-year-olds.
Good. Will follow our same model of preschool that we have in our Council Bluffs schools.
That's a great benefit for them.
Thanks, Leo. So on to the next opportunity that we have to share. And that is our partnership that we're going to expand in great ways. So Dr. Brechner introduced Joel Jerks, the executive director of the West Central Community Action Head Start, Lavina Kuver, and then Trista. Their board, one of their board of directors is also here from Head Start. So I don't know if you guys want to make your way up in case there's questions that they have for you as well. We're very excited about this expansion, and that is because previously we had a relationship, I will say, at Bloomer. And we are going to really enhance and I think build a model that is different than any other model in the state of Iowa. And that is that we are going to fully integrate Head Start and the Council Bluffs Schools in our preschool programs. So we will, we will have all of our own staff, as we have, but we will be working in partnership with Head Start to start to use the Head Start standards, performance standards, which totally align with the Iowa Quality Preschool Programming Standards. But it's very exciting because we will be having the opportunity to enhance services to our families in programs by adding a family advocate that Head Start is going to provide to those elementaries. So previously, our relationship was at Bloomer. We are off, we are expanding to this partnership. We'll be present now at Carter Lake, Edison, Longfellow, and Franklin. Have to look up there, it's on my mind there. It will, it will also serve four-year-olds' full-day programming. However, if we have like a three-quarter day program in that building, or we have a half-day program in that building, they will not just label the kids in the half-day program. Their family advocates will serve all families in preschool in that building, which is very exciting and an opportunity. One of the, one of the key findings from the study that I mentioned at the beginning is the results of looking at low-income or disadvantaged children and the importance of immersing them and integrating with children of all needs, all backgrounds, so that they have the opportunity to continue to learn and explore and grow in their language and communication and other social, emotional developmental areas. And we think this partnership versus having them in isolation out on their Madison Avenue site will provide a really enhanced program from what they were providing their families. And we will have the advantage and the opportunity to expand the services by having that marriage of the family advocate to help our families that are, have barriers to getting their kids to school. You know, making ends meet because maybe they can't pay their gas bill. Well, now we have a family advocate that can help the parent deal with that and make sure the kid gets to school. So just breaking down some of those barriers to get these children to school. And we just, we can't think of a greater opportunity other than the fact that this, this partnership truly helps us maintain the current funding programming that we have. This year, we took during the school year, a couple hits from some major funding sources. Our funds were cut mid-year in shared visions funding. And our funding from Promise Partners was cut. And then Promise Partners changed how we could use funds for next year and cut it almost three times the amount that we had. So things have really changed. Our Iowa West dollars, as we reported before, have remained flat for the last 10 years. So this partnership is really not only, I feel, a win-win for our kids, but also for the programming and the kids that they have. Because it's going to allow us to continue to maintain the number of programming and services at these schools that we previously have served. So I don't know if you have any com, further comments or questions for our Head Start?
I might say that if Council Bluffs as a community had not won the All-America School Award, which is always based on partnerships, this would be another reason to look at us as a, as an all-America city. Because this is a wonderful partnership. And I have watched, I, I bless the people here, Lavinia and Joan, for doing lots of give and take. And, well, this is what you have to do. Well, how about if we did it a different way? Well, let's think about it. There's been lots of give and take, and in the end, the children are the ones that are going to be the most, most helped. But we, as a school district, as Joan said, are going to have some wonderful benefits. And Head Start is going to be able to increase the number of kids served. And hopefully, we're all going to be more successful. The, when they brought the family advocates to the table and pointed out that they would not just be working with the children that we identified, but with all the preschoolers, that was wonderful. So in those five schools, preschool is going to reach a new level. And it's because of a lot of people. Joan gets very big kudos for making this work, point by point. So it's very exciting. We want Iowa West Foundation and our community to realize that we're kind of holding hands and walking forward from this point forward. And it's going to be good for everybody.
So it was my understanding that this helps us financially, but more importantly to me, are we expanding services to more children?
It is allowing us to maintain the current services that we had this year and expanding programming through the family advocate services that Head Start will be bringing to the table. So it's actually helping us maintain.
But you raise a really good point, that we wish we could get to the point of serving more. And we will continue to raise that point with anybody in the community and look for additional partnerships. Because there are children that are not yet being served, and we want them all to be served.
Well, the ones that the Y are going to serve, are they new?
Yes. They would be new, new students, yes.
And I hear you say 81 students?
No.
All four-year-olds?
We have to use a balance of 16 per preschool class.
One to 16 is the Council Bluffs Schools. The state allows one to 20. So Leo has a little bit of.
A little more flexibility, yeah.
Right.
So how does the, how does the, this advocate person fit into the, I guess, the, maybe that struggling new learner with the, with the teacher, with the parent? I guess, how's that relationship work? Or how do you anticipate it working?
Well, the family advocate can kind of be a. The family advocate could also help be a voice for the parent and go with the parent to the teacher if the parent is not sure on what to say to the teacher. We've had that in the past. They, is what they do is they empower the parents, and they kind of, they set goals. And our goal is for our parents to be more self-sufficient and meet their goal by the time that their child is done with our program.
More of like a liaison for the parent to the teacher, or? Like, I'm trying to figure out how, if like, there's an educational, say there's a meeting about child who's struggling. Is that, at what point do they engage, does the teacher engage the family advocate to engage the family? Or, or is it always, maybe it's, you know, like, if I have a, if I have a secretary, and I go to have a conference with the teacher, I wouldn't have this service. But what does that look like with a family advocate?
Well, the family advocate isn't necessarily for the educational piece for the child. It is more like in order for us to, we kind of, we'd empower the parent to learn how important education is to bring their child to school. And if that parent is struggling with possibly no food, or getting a bill paid, or even getting their child to school on time, then we would counsel that, we would work with that parent on putting a plan together and bringing them, you know, getting them to school on time. Or to refer them to the food bank, or refer them to LIHEEP for services that way. They can also help be that voice for the teacher if the parent and the advocate happen to get that bond together. And then they can kind of work together to move forward that way as well.
So how are the, are the families identified through socioeconomic means, or how do they identify who?
The Head Start children are identified through income. We're an income-based program. And we serve the 100% poverty. Right. They won't be separated out at those buildings, so we'll do it on our end and the Council Bluffs end. But in the classrooms, they're not going to know the difference of who is a Head Start child and who's not a Head Start child.
And is this something where a teacher could identify and say, hey, I mean, will you guys have, it's interesting, you're serving all pre-K kids. Will that, I mean, is that all pre-K kids who qualify in income, or all pre-K kids regardless of income?
All, family advocate will work with all the children enrolled in, in the pre-K programs at those schools.
Okay. So then if I, how is, how is the, if I don't, if it wouldn't be an economic reason, but I, as a teacher, would see something, am I going to engage this family advocate to reach out to the family, or is it?
There's a family assessment needs, that needs assessment that will be done with all the parents. And those that, you know, they can opt out of it. It's, we're not forcing anybody to do that. So you're going to have some families in those, those schools who aren't interested in working with our family advocate, and that's fine. We'll work with those that are willing to work with us.
And how will we engage the pre-K kids and families? To let them know this is an option now, I guess. Or will we start with those, those income identified kids, or how will we start this process?
It's the, we use the same exact process that we've always used, Mr. Arthur, as far as we screen the children. And we look at three criteria for all children, for all our preschool programming. Income, eligibility, and guidelines are just one piece of the criteria. We also look at any secondary at-risk factors that the family may report. And then we do what's called a Denver Developmental Screener on the children. And that looks at the ready, the pre-readiness academic skills of the child. So that kind of gives us a, a complete composite. And then from there, then we make placements in the schools based on those three criteria. So that's what we, what I said, the exciting part about the key findings is we have children, you know, at many income levels in these schools, but they have varying degrees of need. And they tend to be not any different than other schools. But we're looking at those same three criterias and trying to serve our most needy children. The advantage of this, this new partnership is having the family advocate that we've never had before. And stressing the importance of preschool is the foundation to their school years. And that lays a strong foundation when we can get them to school attending regularly. The parents feeling comfortable, confident, secure with that relationship with our schools. And breaking down any kind of barriers that prohibit them to be able to get into school and have their child attend regularly. So they will start off just like we will with home visits. For any fam, we are required to do it with all of ours, but they will do it with any one of the families that will participate with them voluntarily.
Just a comment. I think this is excellent. I'm very excited about this. We can't sit around waiting for the state to devote more money to doing this. So we have to rely on partnerships like this to enhance and expand the services we provide to our kids and our families. So thank you for all of the work and the willingness to do this. And I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you.
I promised these guys we'd all be excited. I think you were expecting confetti and balloons and everything, right? But, oh, we are.
Lost my last slide. I've got a, I've got a, I've got a really cool farm, farm implement here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I guess, just in summary, what I want to say with all of these community partners is, partnerships, is that it really supports the key findings that continue to surface of current research. It has provided us the opportunity to expand. It may be 20 kids this year, but it was 20 kids last year when we did Children's Square USA. And so we'll continue, once we have a successful partnership, we'll be able to show others how we can do it and continue to expand with other businesses that may want to have preschool programming. So you're right, we're going to keep growing. It also allows us to influence preschool programming to make sure that it is quality preschool programming, that it looks different than daycare or anything else through this partnership. And I think that's very exciting. And the bottom line, as always, is these children are our children. No matter which preschool program they go to, they become our kids in kindergarten. And we want to help them be the most prepared and ready-to-learn children in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
And now we have Iowa Assessments Annual Report.
Dr. Vorthman will present the Iowa Assessments Report.
Very nice.
Good evening. My goal tonight is not to sound like a broken record, because many of the things that I will share with you tonight, you have probably heard before. But the fact remains that we still are using the Iowa Assessment Test for performance, the same one that we used last year. And I'll just point out quickly a few reminders as we get to that in the presentation. But I provided in front of you a printed copy of what was in your board packet so that you might. so that you might refer back to it as necessary throughout the year. If you have additional questions about specific data points that you see in there, be more than happy to address those at any time.
Thanks for providing this.
You're welcome.
This is one advantage over the computer.
You bet. You might have to put your magnifying glasses on.
Yeah, I'm doing okay.
Good, good. Well, three main points tonight I want to share with you about our annual Iowa Assessments. First of all, as you well know, and you could articulate probably better than I, uh, could as I've had this conversation with the board many times. Unfortunately, Iowa Assessments are a standardized assessment that's not representative of our enacted curriculum. And, uh, I'll remind you of a few points why that is here in a moment. Secondly, um, because of that, uh, that unique variable of unaligned, um, assessment, they vary greatly by districts and by, um, even across the state of Iowa. Um, even those that are much like us in size and demographics. And then lastly, tonight, I want to share with you, um, uh, some work that we've done on trying to put into perspective, what could we really use these assessments for? If it's not really to judge performance of what's going on in our classrooms, uh, because of the nature of the assessment, how could we make some value-added, um, insights from what we get from Iowa Assessments? And so I'll share a little bit with you about that as well. So for your, uh, just a refresher quickly, if you remember, I've shared with you several times in the past that Data Recognition Corp. did a study of the Iowa Assessments. Um, and those of you who are listening at home, you'll probably remember the Iowa Assessments formerly as the Iowa Test of Basic Skills or the Iowa Test of Educational Development. Um, same horse, different color, um, at this stage of the game. Um, but the Iowa Assessments continue to be our norm-referenced measure that's used for accountability. Um, there's a flaw in that. Um, norm-referenced measures for accountability are not generally accepted within the educational, um, research community, but Iowa still uses it. Um, and the Data Recognition Corp., um, which was commissioned to do a study on the Iowa Assessments in 2013, reported back to the Iowa Department of Education that overall, there's really a lacking relationship in both reading and math between the Iowa Core standards, which are required by the state of Iowa, um, and the assessment that they use to judge whether the Iowa Core meets the needs of all students. You've heard that before. I have equated it to, similar to, um, throwing a dart at a target board that you are blindfolded. Because our teachers, um, try their very best every day, um, to make sure that our kids, uh, have everything that they need to learn and then are judged based on whether or not their students perform well on an assessment that has nothing to do with the curriculum that they taught. Very unfortunate and unfair for our teachers. Um, just a few specifics from that report. Um, if you remember, uh, only two-thirds of the test in reading is actually covering grade level material. And in math, it's even worse, it's only a fifth, um, that actually is on grade level standards for mathematics. And as you've heard me say many times before, I truly believe that the closer we get to full implementation of the Iowa Core, the farther away we get from the Iowa Assessments. Now, that being said, Iowa Assessments obviously vary greatly even by comparable districts. And one of the reasons in a norm-referenced measure, we would expect that we would not see wild ups and downs in our data. And unfortunately, that is exactly what we see. Um, what I provided with you tonight is just a snapshot of our cohort data. This is like kids from year to year, uh, looking at, uh, the past five years, um, that we've given, uh, actually six years that we've given the same assessment, we've given Form F now, um, for five years. And the ones that are starred, you see that we have increases in cohort growth over time. Um, and that's in reading. Um, this is a chart that was provided this year by the, um, Iowa Assessments in general. And why I wanted to point out to you tonight is that the blue line shows the trajectory for proficiency. So in order to be considered proficient, students must hit a standard scale score at or above that line. The orange line shows, uh, our cohort from fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen, um, what their average standard scale score was, um, this year. So the nice thing is, you can see in reading, we, um, start out right about the level of proficiency, um, average proficiency. And we, uh, either stay above or widen the gap between proficiency and where our students are. Um, and we have positive growth every year with the exception of, of eleventh grade. And I'll, uh, come back to eleventh grade in a minute. Same thing can be seen in math. Uh, we have, uh, increases in the third grade cohort, the seventh grade cohort, the ninth grade cohort, and the tenth grade cohort. And it's a similar picture when it looks, with looking at proficiency, um, and growth. Uh, we continue to widen the gap between what is, uh, minimum level of proficiency and where our students grow each year. Interesting thing about eleventh grade reading, um, we have been disappointed with eleventh grade reading for several years and been racking our brains trying to figure out why. We've, we've gone back to, um, the item level reports that come from the Iowa Assessments. We've looked at our own curriculum, we've asked other schools what they're doing. And, uh, Dr. Shudak, Director of Assessment, um, and I finally came to the conclusion this year that there absolutely must be something wrong with the scaling of either the tenth or eleventh grade test. Um, as you can see, what this chart represents is the change in percent proficient by cohorts from fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen um, for the blue lines, which was all, uh, all schools in the UEN and council bluff schools, which are in the orange. And so we're not alone at eleventh grade in seeing radical dips in proficiency from tenth to eleventh grade. And it certainly isn't because our students, um, are not doing well in eleventh grade. In fact, uh, where we saw some of the biggest drops in proficiency were in advanced coursework. Um, uh, among some of our most, um, uh, challenged students. Uh, but where we didn't see, we, we did a comparison study where we didn't see that hold true was on ACT. So we don't see any correlation between student performance on ACT and reading and English and Iowa Assessment in reading. Um, which is really strange considering that Iowa Assessments has long touted its relationship with, uh, full alignment with ACT. So we've actually been working with Tom Dieter at the Iowa Department of Educat, at the Iowa Department of Education to try to determine if there is something strange about the way that the eleventh grade test is scaled. We should not see that wild, um, dip in eleventh grade. Um, but as you can see in several other grade levels, for the most part, we are on par. And in many instances, we outperform our UEN colleagues in reading, uh, especially in elementary school. This is a similar graph for mathematics. We also, if you remember last year, I showed you, um, the, the, the big flaw in the eighth grade test about how much of it was on grade level material. And you'll see, it's no different for us or our UEN colleagues at eighth grade. We see radical dips from seventh to eighth grade. Um, much of that is, I believe, attributed to the way that this test is scaled at eighth grade. Um, and the content that's delivered at eighth grade. So what does this mean to us? What value does it have to us? It has to be a silver lining, it has to be a takeaway. So one of the things that the Teaching and Learning Department has been grappling with this last year is, um, trying to think about how we can continue to improve. And that our, the core purpose behind why we exist as a department and as leaders in teaching and learning is to continuously guide, support, and empower educators in the continuous improvement of teaching and learning. We're about getting better. And one of the things that we have tried to do is look at, what is research currently telling us about how we go about improving? And, uh, educators have been, uh, given a bad rap for many, many years. Um, in that if we find a, a, a solution that we like, we use it until we decide we don't like it anymore and then move on to something else. Um, before we can actually either replicate the results or determine if they have been statistically significant or not. One of the things we've learned from the research of Anthony Burke, who, um, it was at the Carnegie Institute and did, uh, some time in Chicago, um, from his book, Learning to Improve. So one of the things we absolutely have to start thinking about is not chasing average. And unfortunately, average is easy for us to get our heads around. And it makes easy, uh, headlines in newspapers because we just report, um, we, we take out all of the really low performance and all of the really high performance. And we just focus on, what does the mean tell us? What's that middle number that's easy to digest? And in fact, what the research tells us, if we're actually going to improve, if we're going to take a, um, if we're gonna look at how improvement science actually works and generates results, it's not about going after increasing the average performance, it's about decreasing the variance among performance. And so that's what I want to share with you tonight about one of the things we've learned about Iowa Assessments in terms of very variance in performance. So I want to suggest to you tonight for illustrative purposes that this is, uh, what we would consider to be a normal distribution. A bell curve, the same normal distribution that many things in nature are based on, achievement is based on, selection is based on, the Iowa Assessments themselves are based on. And we would assume that the performance on, uh, the Iowa Assessment by any given grade level would be considerate of the normal distribution. We would have about sixty-seven percent of all of our classrooms kind of in the middle. And then everybody else would be on the two wings. So what I did was I went and looked at a, we actually looked at many, but for illustrative purposes tonight, I'll just share with you that this represents, um, part of the range of performances by classrooms at a single grade level in reading in our school district. And it shows the range that sixty-one, about sixty-one point seven percent was the average proficiency. And so we have proficiency levels among classrooms ranging all the way from ninety-two percent all the way down below ninety-two percent. Sixty-one's the average. So if I only report to you that at a certain grade level, sixty-one percent of our students were proficient, you miss the fact that there's a huge range of variance in the performance of our schools. In fact, many of our schools, many of our grade levels, many of our teachers and many of our students perform much above the average. And unfortunately, some of them perform below the average. So what does this tell us? Well, we've done a lot of study about the idea around positive deviance. And positive deviance, I think, is a fancy buzzword for the outliers. Or the people who I like to refer to as those that are getting it done. So if you look at this very little tail, those that perform about from eighty to ninety-two percent, there's not very many of them there, is there? It's a small number, it's too small. But they're getting something done. In fact, what would happen if we were able to move that entire distribution one standard deviation to the right? What I mean by that is, what if we were able to replicate the practices of those stand, those positive deviance? Those people who, those classrooms, those practitioners, those experts, who are actually figuring it out or doing something different than everyone else? Well, we know who those classrooms are. So this is just a small snapshot of some of the study and analysis that we've done this spring after the Iowa Assessments came back. And what that orange, that yellow shaded box shows us is both growth and proficiency, because they're both important. Growth goes along the horizontal axis and proficiency goes along the vertical axis. And the green lines represent average growth vertically and average proficiency horizontally. So as you move across, you can see in the upper right-hand box, each one of those dots represents a classroom in reading on this year's assessment that showed growth and proficiency above what we would consider to be the average last year. So it begs the question of what are they doing differently? If we have everybody in that yellow box that is growing kids at a higher level than average and has proficiency in their classroom at a higher level than average, they must be doing something differently. So we went back and replicated it for the previous year and the year previous to that. So we have three years of data where we've been able to identify in math and reading the teachers who consistently, the classrooms that consistently outperform everyone else. We didn't make this up, it's not something that we just, uh, decided one day that we were gonna go do. Positive deviance has recently been embraced to improve the quality of healthcare and education. Believe it or not, uh, studies have been done that show that the premise is that the solutions to common problems, the solutions mostly exist within clinical communities. I.e. our teachers in learning communities, in learning teams, in grade level partnerships. And that identifiable members of the community have tacit knowledge. That means they likely know what to do already. And it can be generalized, it means it can be replicated across multiple communities. Moreover, these solutions, because they were generated within the community, they almost always have a much higher likelihood of being accepted and replicated elsewhere. Why do I bring this to you tonight? Because this is our work into the next school year. While we can look at the Iowa Assessments and bemoan the fact that they're not aligned to our assessment, if we look at three years' worth of trend data, there obviously is something for us to learn from going into classrooms of teachers who are consistently beating the odds. And it behooves us to understand and embrace and empower those professionals who are showing that students can grow and can achieve proficiency at great levels. And it's not because we want to single them out or because we want to pin a badge on them, but it's because we want to empower them to take on leadership roles and help us discover what they've already discovered. In our community, we call it teacher collective efficacy or building capacity. And it's something that we are going to go after next year, um, by going into classrooms, by observing, by following a, what has already been a well-documented, uh, healthcare approach to identifying how you, um, identify replicable behaviors, test hypotheses around them and replicate them. And we believe that it will, it has the opportunity to hold some promise for us to identify what practices we may either have missed or have not been aware of. Not because one size fits all, but because there are likely practices that two teachers having, sitting right next to each other probably don't know that each other are even doing. So our Iowa Assessment results you have in front of you, um, unfortunately, don't represent what is the, are the best things that are going on in our classrooms. Um, and as a result, have a lot of variance. But we are committed to, um, empowering teachers to helping reduce variance across our district so that we can continue to improve and provide high-quality education, not in just some classrooms, but in all classrooms. If you have any questions, I would welcome then at this time or at any time.
Any questions from the board?
Um, we're already doing the, the walkthroughs and the assessments, uh, our principals, our teacher, our, 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 our prime leader and the, uh, teacher in the, in the, in the school. So I mean, I'm pretty sure you, those, those, um, techniques and, and, and tools that are being used in, in the, in those, uh, highly growth-oriented and proficient classrooms. So I mean, I think we already have a sense of, of what, what is effective in the classroom. It's just a matter, I think, that, that your digging through the data has, has, um, validated those, those practices, those best practices that are occurring in the classroom. So I, I think it's nothing new, I, I don't think that, that you've stumbled upon, you, we've known. But this, I guess, gives us some, um, validation of, of what's going on in the classroom that is effective.
I think one of the things that we have to tackle, because you're absolutely right. One of the things that we have to tackle is, because the work is so complicated, teaching an individual child is complex work. And then you put twenty-three of them in a classroom with needs that range from here to here and you've compounded it exponentially. So I, one of the things that's critical that the research points out to us is doing a much better job at identifying what things should be standardized so that they become more simplistic and automatic, so that they become second nature. And my hypothesis is that many of these teachers who are in the upper right-hand corner are already doing some things automatically that we don't honor or value nearly enough. That's a hypothesis.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna test it next year to see if it's, if it's true or not. You're exactly right, I have a hunch of what some of those practices are. But I think until we triangulate that across multiple classrooms and see exactly what are teachers in council bluffs who are beating the odds over multiple years at a time, I'm not talking one snapshot at a time. beating the odds over multiple years at a time, I'm not talking one snapshot at a time or, but in a, as close as we can get to a randomized sample, what are they doing differently? And I think until we can really understand that, we are not going to know what works best in council bluffs. Because a lot of things work, but it's about what works best.
Out of those classrooms, is that, is that elementary, or is that all classrooms?
That is grades four through eleven.
Four through eleven.
So in, actually, three through eleven, where we had matched pairs, where we could measure growth from one year to the next.
Okay. I like the graph.
Which one?
The line that shows growth. So when they report this to the non-forel or on the website, can we add that on there too, showing that we are actually doing something, even though the book says we don't? Well, this one too. There's a math and then, and then the reading one.
Yeah, but you see, the reading has bigger growth.
It does, until you get to that, you know, whatever tests are taking in eleventh grade.
Yeah.
So that would be good to, to add on to there, that there is growth.
Were we surprised at all? I mean, I guess I don't know how much you've looked into this at the classroom level already, but were we surprised by folks who had, I mean, I assume in our mind, kind of along what Dave was thinking, that we've identified teachers who are great at some best practices?
Sure.
And we assume that they will perform at a certain level.
Sure.
Because of that. Was there any surprises yet that we've seen? Was there? Okay.
And that's what caused us to pause, I'll be real honest with you. Like I said, it's, a lot of things work, but it's what works best. And it's about what works best for the children that you have in front of you, and that changes from year to year oftentimes. And I, I think we have to be very careful, and I mentioned this to Dr. Brechner several times, we have to be very careful about getting too married to specific models or specific frameworks, because those are important when they help simplify the work and make it automatic, but when we use that as something that we believe should be ubiquitous across all classrooms at all times, we often miss the fact that we may make the work more complicated by doing that.
That chart that, with the yellow box, you want to put that up there again, please?
I call that, and in our internal department meetings, we call that the, it's being done box.
Okay. Have our teaching staff seen that?
They just.
You're going to share with them?
They just did.
Hey, look at the box.
I mean, you alluded in your presentation that when these teachers that are getting the job done, their colleagues have more respect for them than you telling them to do that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't necessarily say they're getting the job, they're getting the job done every day. They're beating average growth, and they're beating average proficiency on this measure. And what I think is most important is that we've isolated over the past three years who occurs in all three years. And then we've even drilled down to say, okay, who, who's in all three years, and who's in all three years in math and reading at elementary? That's a small group of people. I really want to know what they're doing.
So, so does our, our work on the teacher leadership position us well to jump into this now?
Yes, I think it absolutely does. I think it absolutely, we have an opportunity, I think, to provide more access for teachers to not only collaborate, but to visit each other's classrooms, to work side by side with each other, to plan together, to observe each other, and I think that without teacher leadership, that wouldn't be possible.
So was anyone else, I mean, I feel like, after having sat on that CLC committee and different things in the state, like, I feel like this is where we should have gone with this, I mean, this is where we needed to go with this, which is just this data-driven, but best-practice oriented, and, and so I'm so happy to see this. But I'm curious, when do we start to engage? Will we engage, will we study this and then engage these other, the state, different groups?
I'm, I'm most concerned about.
Council bluffs.
Third graders and council bluffs.
I mean, just on what we're doing to change.
Sure, sure. I, I don't think we're doing anything that is outside of the realm of, of, I wouldn't even necessarily call innovative. What we're trying to do is translate research into practice.
I feel like this is the one that gives TLC true meaning.
Absolutely.
Because now you can actually quantify and say, yeah, look at this, this works, these...
Yeah, the, the thing that's challenging, Mr. Arthur, is, is drawing that nexus between, we got this result and we did this treatment. And that's always difficult. And I, I would hate to, I would hate to convey that that, that we're going to be able to do that with this. I think without teacher leadership, it doesn't give us the vehicle to help build capacity in people so that they feel confident to lead in front of their peers. We want more people feeling more confident, better prepared, to actually step out and say, yeah, you can come visit my classroom, yeah, let's work on this together.
Well, hopefully, I think, to engage those who are struggling with best practices and in ways that they, you know, three, four years ago, it might have been very difficult to have that conversation.
Yeah, there, there actually is a great amount, there's a ton of research on this, about do you spend your time identifying the negative effects of something or the positive? And this is about the positive, this is, we're going to worry less about fixing all of the things that are broken and spend a lot more time identifying what are the things that work really well. Totally a growth-based model that is about engaging the profession. I mean, our teachers went to school for a long time, they have, they have degrees and they have licenses that have been conferred upon them because they're experts. We would never walk into a doctor's office and say, excuse me, I don't like what I see about your data. Wouldn't do that. Or, I, I, I don't know that you're, I don't know the way that you taught vowel sounds was correct. We wouldn't do that. So I think this starts to, the goal is to engage and empower our teachers to be the problem solvers.
I'm wondering, for those that are in the upper right corner, about what percent were also in the upper right corner last year and the year before, or is there a lot of movement into and out of the corner there?
Three years is difficult, especially as we went back and looked at the data, many, we have grade level changes. So if I was at third grade this year, I might be at fifth grade next year. I don't know if that's the delimeter of the data or not, if that's the thing that makes the biggest amount of difference, but there were a small handful that were in all three
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your support.
That was exciting. Like, I like that. Now we have our Class 2017 Graduate Perception Survey Report. Dr. Plord will lead us.
Dr. Brechner, Plord, thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about our, what our graduates tell us, our 2017 graduates tell us. Three points we want to discuss this evening. We are improving, but you'll see in the data that there are still a few things we need to work on. We know that our students are reporting as they graduate that we're doing some good things, and they acknowledge that. And then as promised last year, you probably remember, we created a new survey which gave us some baseline data, and one of the things we promised is that we would take a look at subgroup data. That's something that we've moved into. You can hear from Dr. Vorthman's presentation that we continue to get more and more sophisticated about how we look at data, and so I want to share a few discoveries regarding subgroups. As I said, we're improving, but our work continues. Our most improved response is something that I was celebrating personally, but thinking about our, our teams and how hard they've worked. I've done a lot of board presentations, and I've only had one picture taken during that time. Mr. Arthur took a picture last year of the original forty-two point six percent, and one of the things I, I promised is that we would, we would work on that. So this is a, this is a photo op, Mr. Arthur. As, as he takes the picture, I want to explain a few things. The first question is, okay, what did you do to improve? And the second question is, as I said, we still have work to do. If we're honest with ourselves, only half of our students tell us we're doing a good job in this area. So we're quick to celebrate. The two things that we did specifically were, for the first time ever, we had the data to begin with, and we shared that data with key stakeholders. Just bringing awareness to the concern was really the first step. We've sensed it for some time in council bluff schools, but we never really had hard data. We didn't have an item that asked students how they felt about their financial literacy. The second thing you guys know is we began to implement Money Matters, which is a, a new course at the high school, we offered at both of our high schools, we have students taking advantage of that. It's not a required course at this point, although that's something that we've all discussed in the past. So we're celebrating, but we realize we have more work to do. The two things that we're going to do to continue to improve are, you may be aware that the State Department has, as a part of the adoption of the social studies standards, incorporated the financial literacy standards within that, and so those are embedded at our social studies courses. So that will, will help this to continue to improve. We're specifically, as a starting point, targeting middle, middle school students. We have three layers of courses, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The course is called The Game of Life, and it incorporates the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade financial literacy standards with our middle school students. It uses a entrepreneurial bent, ties in with some of our high school courses and thinking about our Business Ventures Academy, and so this idea of, of attacking budget and finances like businesses do is kind of the model, and it makes it a little bit of, a little bit of fun for middle schoolers. So we're going to continue to work on that. Like I said before, our students are acknowledging that we're doing some good things. The item that I'm most proud of, that was also the highest item last year, is that students report that they believe that we care about them. You guys know we have worked very, very hard in middle school and high school with our advisement to help young people know that we are here for them and we advocate for them, and the advisement models helped us with that. Ninety-four point three percent of our students report that they believe that at least one adult cares about them, so we're proud of that fact. We're also proud of the fact that we've improved twelve of the sixteen questions. Your list, they're listed there by three-year positive trend lines and two-year new-question positive trend lines. The specific questions are in your board report. I will say of the four that went down, three of the four went down less than a percentage point, so really you could argue it's somewhat, somewhat flat at this point. The two-year questions, the reason we only have a two-year for those and we're celebrating is because those are all new questions. Some we created, but most of those are from the state. For instance, the state requires us to ask students whether they had a paying job during, during high school, whether they were involved in extracurricular activities in high school. So those are new questions that we have a two-year positive trend line on. As I said, we need to continue to study subgroups. I've got some information regarding that that I want to share. I think the general overall statement that's good news is, out of all of the questions, I worked with Dr. Shudek on this, we compared and mixed and matched every combination we could to see if there were any concerns related to the data. We discovered three. Two are here, and then one's on the next slide. The three areas that we're concerned about were question twenty and twenty-one, which relate to students applying for scholarships, and related to that, students applying for college. What we discovered was that young men, we're not sure why at this point, but young men in our schools apply for less scholarships at a statistically significant lower rate as well as colleges. So I've already met personally, face-to-face with each high school principal, privately shared the data with them, explained that I would be sharing this data with you this evening, and that they're going to share that with their lead teams and their counselors and take a look at what's behind that. Related to that, our students that are special education also apply for scholarships and apply for colleges at a statistically lower rate than the typical population. So those are two areas we need to pay attention to. It's new data, it's, it's data that we didn't know before, but now we have the data, now we can incorporate those into our plans.
Got a question before we go on to the next slide?
Yes.
Do we have any data for comparable school districts to see, are, are special education students double the rate of comparable districts, or at least we can say we're doing something good?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. We haven't done that, no. This is, this is kind of new territory for us, but that's, that's a good follow-up. Maybe that's something that Dr. Morella will assign to my replacement next year. The other big discovery is extracurricular participation. We celebrate in one sense, our students participate in extracurriculars at high levels. You see eighty-one percent of our students participate. We've been growing that number. You guys often hear from Jeff Nabotny and Jeremy Stuckenholtz, our athletic directors, of all of the things that they're doing to increase these rates. However, what we've discovered is that we have a couple populations that we need to take a look at. Hispanic students and special ed students are not participating at the rates that we would expect them to. When I was the principal at Thomas Jefferson High School, this was something that we discovered, that young Hispanics, particularly males, were not participating in sports. And so one of the things we did, Jeremy and I, is we had conversations and focus groups with some young, young men, and really what we discovered is, many of them were just an invitation away. And once we engaged them in a conversation and told them that we were concerned and we wanted them to participate, we saw those numbers improve. But this confirms that it's something that we need to continue to pay attention to. That number, I, I am happy to report, is higher than it used to be when I was at Thomas Jefferson, but it's still obviously an area for concern. Same thing with special ed students. So we're going to do many things to continue. I've, I've got a list in the board report, but I wanted to highlight four here. You know that you heard about strategic plan number five. We've worked very, very hard. Dr. Vorthman has led a whole team over the course of the year to try to build awareness and to come up with a plan. Now it's time for us to implement that plan, and we believe that will improve some of the survey results that you see here. Related to that, we purchased a platform called Naviance, and one of the things that you guys may remember is, the State Department has required for some time, it was called I Have a Plan, eighth-grade students to create a four-year plan. That has since gone away, and they've deferred to local districts to make a decision on how they'll approach this. Again, we, we've hired, we've purchased Naviance, and we're going to start those plans instead of eighth grade, we're going to dip down to sixth grade and work with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. This summer, we have a whole team of people that are going to go to a special training to learn how to use Naviance, and we'll begin to roll that out starting next year. You've heard about Grow CB, we need to continue that, it's a great community-wide initiative, we're going to keep growing that. And then finally, some good news that just came out today, we are officially, both middle schools are officially candidacy schools, and so we need to really focus on IB at our middle schools and implementing, implementing those things. So as I said, we're improving, but we need to continue to work. Our students are recognizing that we're on the right track and doing good things, and our subgroups are something our schools are going to pay attention to. I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions from the board? Very good, thank you, Dr. Plord.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your...
Thank you.
Good luck in your new job. Thanks for your service here.
I'll be around. Thank you.
Now we move to informational presentations. We have the third trimester enrollment report.
Mr. McGreevy.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Brechner.
Good evening.
It's the trimester three enrollment report. Just give you a few highlights, the entire report is in your board packet there for you. Enrollment has decreased from eleven students from last year. It's negligible amount, as you see, we've had a pretty good growth the last few years. Minority population is remaining about steady. Graph kind of skews it there because it starts off at twenty-one percent, but twenty-one, twenty-two percent of minority population in the district. Mobility rate has gone down again for another year, which is great news to hear, that our kids are staying in the schools that they are enrolled in. Must have a good thing going. ELL has remained steady since last year, around five hundred and forty-seven students currently. I believe the dip there was, there was a reclassification between the fourteen, fifteen Special education students have increased many times. Good and bad thing to happen, but it's, we are giving the students services they need.
We honestly do kind of suspect that some of these students are coming here because of the services we have. I know the board dealt earlier this school year with somebody that wanted to option in, and they were late, and you eventually let that student option in, and the student is doing very well this year, so.
There's a lot of new programs. The robot is a wonderful example of something that, I mean, nationwide people don't have, but yet we have one here that is just helping those autism students greatly. Any questions?
Projection for next year? I know it's not a fair question, so I just thought maybe you'd sneak it out.
I haven't been doing any projections this year yet.
If I remember right, special ed percentage was about 18%, and now this is about 20%. So it's gone up about 2%?
Since the beginning of the year, probably.
I think we're trying to.
That's how they get classified, too, is they have to come to school.
Sure.
So by October 1st, they're usually not all the way done yet. By the end of the year, they've gotten through that process. It's a long process to get those students categorized as special education.
I'd say we're more diligent about that than we've ever been about trying to provide.
Our special ed deficit's going to be, Morse?
Actually, the special ed deficit may be a little bit better this year because of the increase. We got increase in funding as well, so it may have offset some of the deficit. Becky Zorn and I were looking at it the other day, and I said, what the heck are we missing? Because it seemed that the deficit went down a little bit more than I expected it to go down, so we're still analyzing that.
You CFOs can't stand good news.
I just can't stand good news.
Are there any discussion questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. McGreevy.
Thanks, John. John, would you set up for my PowerPoint? That'd be great.
Oh. So now we have Dr. Bruckner's going to speak on her.
Well, first of all, I'm going to point out that the standing committee's annual status report is in your packet. We don't usually make an oral report about this. Our board policy to 10 states that we have six statutory and standing committees, and once a year, we, once a year, we would tell you who's on the committee, and then at the end of the year, we report committee work throughout the year, et cetera. And any of those people will answer any questions you have. If you don't have any, we'll go on to the next.
We have none.
We have none.
Now move on to curriculum management audit.
It's so nice to have teachers in the audience tonight. You wonder what we do all summer while you're on break. Isn't this fun? This is what we do, and the board loves it, too. Once a year, we talk about the curriculum management audit. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our history. The curriculum management audit is designed to reveal the extent to which officials and professional staff have developed and implemented a sound, valid, and operational system of curriculum management. Such a system enables the district to make maximum use of human and financial resources. We have had two of these in the last decade. Audit one occurred in April 2008, and we made the first report to you that June. Quarterly reports were provided the next year. After that, though, we did strategic plans, so we moved curriculum audit reports to annual instead of quarterly. Annual reports on the audit were made in 2010 through 13. I twisted some arms in teaching and learning, and we did a second audit in fall of 2013, at which point the curriculum auditors, who came from all across the country, would have stated that we made a lot of progress, except it's always a deficit model, so they always tell us what we could do better. We've given you annual reports in 2014, 15, 16, and this is 2017. So I am just going to give you the quickest review of the nine main areas that we talked about. You have a report in your packet about what we worked on. Item number one says that we need to continually pay attention to board policies because board policies direct the local system of curriculum management and quality control, and they've asked us to put a lot of things in our board policy that keep us on the straight and narrow. Secondly, curriculum auditors want us to align strategic plan, curriculum building initiatives to provide quality control, consistency, and continuity, and to provide multi-year professional development support and follow-through on district initiatives, so that we're not starting something new every year. Three, we were asked to continue to improve achievement and graduation rates, strive to equal student access to comparable programs, services, and opportunities. Jason's report just pointed out that we are looking at that carefully. We haven't necessarily hit the goal every single year, but it's still on our radar. We need to allocate resources based on student needs. The fourth main area is to design and implement a comprehensive curriculum management plan in which we look at delivery, monitoring, and evaluation of our curriculum, and promote consistency and quality control across school and grade levels. Dr. Vorthman's report tonight talks about the fact that we are digging into whether or not we do have that quality control in all classrooms, and we're making some discoveries, yes, in some areas and no in some others. The fifth main area was a comprehensive student and program assessment plan, and we have worked on that in the last four years, to align student and program assessment planning with a curriculum management plan. Marty Shudek, our director of assessment, has program development, he's looked at program evaluation in several categories on an ongoing basis, identified at the beginning of the school year. Design and implement a system-wide professional development program. That's been pushed along magnificently when we followed their recommendation to have a professional development director, and Melissa Chlebnik has done a great job. They ask us to narrow a number of new staff development initiatives. We're hearing that from you also. We're hearing that from our new superintendent. Seven, develop a comprehensive long-term facilities plan. I think we've done that over the course of the last decade. We haven't necessarily met all of the tenants that the curriculum auditors would tell us. Eight is a multi-year comprehensive curriculum-driven budget process. If you looked at that area of the management audit, we have not met specifically many of these targets because Dean Wilson and persons prior to him in that role have not necessarily agreed with the focus. Curriculum management audit is strictly optional if we implement it or not, and some of the things that they've done, we've looked at carefully. Others, we've decided are not helpful to us at this time. And finally, they wanted us to revise the table of organization to adhere to the principles of sound organizational management, and over the last four years, we have changed that. They no longer let me directly influence the principles. I suppose that's good, even though I was fighting and screaming until it left. Update job descriptions, and you see on your agenda tonight two specific job descriptions that are our final attempt to meet the requirements of the audit. So what are our next steps? I think that our Department of Education has pushed us in a different direction with the differentiated accountability system. We were one of the pilot districts for that. We've continued to work with that, the district, the Iowa Department of Ed, very closely, and have been leaders in their work at the secondary level related to that. My recommendations as outgoing superintendent would be, if you think it's needed, to look at, if your superintendent thinks it's needed, to look at a third curriculum audit in several years. At this point, the curriculum audit does not drive the district as much as the strategic plan, so it's become a little less important, a little less high on our to-do list. So I think our goal tonight was to tie this up in a bow. If you ever have the curriculum auditors come back, you can say to them, we did a final report in June of 2015, and at that point, we decided not to go forward unless you see at a future time that you think it's important. So I'm kind of trying to take this off your to-do list. Do I have any questions about that?
None.
So then, in theory, I'm going to go over here. Since we got into strategic planning, this has been more of the heart and soul of what we've worked on. And as I sat there in that seat tonight and looked for the last time from that seat at these seven guiding principles, I think we have worked on these seven guiding principles, every one of them, before the end of tonight, we will have adhered to those. So this is the quarterly report, the last quarterly report related to the strategic plan. It's usually done in July, but I'm trying to do a favor to my successor by tying this one up in a knot before I leave, so that it's not on her to-do list, and she can start fresh next year. So I always start by reminding you of what our mission was, Dr. Morello. We toyed with trying to change this mission when we did our second strategic plan, and the teachers in the room were the ones that say, no, we think this is our mission, to guarantee that every child graduates with the right skills, knowledge, and attributes to become a meaningfully supportive system citizen in future. The words are all there. We had 13 plans that we worked on this year, and I'm going to just quickly tell you where we are. You have in your board report an updated description of what we have worked on. Number one, we said we were going to focus teacher professional development on instructional practices in order to improve and strengthen classroom instruction with the goal of improving student performance levels. Dr. Vorthman pointed out, we haven't met that goal in every single classroom yet, while we can show some growth. I outlined the word focus because we discussed at length as an administrative team the fact that we need to focus, and we think you are sending us that same message. One point four, the strategy is to communicate information to the community about achievement of school system and its schools, including sharing student performance results. Diane and her committee have really worked on that. We have specific reports we now have on the website for each of the schools, and we're going to continue to work on that because we know that this is essential. Susan, I heard you say earlier, can we tell that to the non-pareil? Because we need the non-pareil, which is really our main voice to our community, one of our main voices, to understand our student performance. One point seven, implement a systemic protocol for determining movement among tiered intervention services in literacy, and working with Department of Ed in our differentiated accountability, we've been working on that. However, one of our big a-haz was, we can't spend all of our time doing intervention. We have to be sure that our universal education to all kids is more successful so that we have fewer kids needing intervention. So we've completed this, but we continue to monitor, and I think Dr. Vorthman pointed that out in his report. Two point one, in very big letters because it's smaller, it's shorter, increase district-wide family engagement. The first big thing we've done this year about in our third trimester, beginning of our third trimester, was to hire a part-time bilingual liaison whom I'm guessing will be full-time before too much longer, to really help us engage our English learner families. We continue our work. Tim Hamilton, who is on holiday tonight, has been leading this, and he's made a lead team that's larger than administrators to push us forward, but this is really important. We want, this year, we worked on a district-wide program to increase what area businesses know about us and to increase our connections. Jason Plort has talked to us a couple of times about Grow CB concept, the fact that we're going to announce that, you're going to hear that in the middle of July at the chamber luncheon. We're trying to keep them as our partner in doing this, and the whole idea of internships is pushing us in this direction. We have a long way to go, but we have crossed the path to understanding we have to do it, and we've got some partners. Two point four, a program that ensures positive respectful interactions whenever anybody communicates with us for the first time. Before the end of the year, we promised and did deliver on having a customer service survey at the bottom of all of our emails. One of the problems is if we forward it four times, you get it four times at the bottom, but we're at least, we have the survey out there, and Diane is going to be monitoring that and sharing it with her lead team on a monthly basis. Three point three is to find a group of legislative advocates. Obviously, we have not yet crossed that bailiwick. We do not have the legislators marching to the sound of our drummer, but we know this is important, and I'm going to talk about it as something we want to continue. Four point one, we want to provide all employees with necessary training, support, and resources. We push this into para and administrative assistant training this year. Kudos go to Melissa Chlebnik, Becky Zorn, for helping us do some good things there. Five point one, we had an entire report on this strategy at our last strategic planning report. I think we're doing wonderful work. A lot of people think it's wonderful work to push us forward to identify both academic skills and noncognitive skills that kids need to have in order to be successful. I'm going to get to keep working on that one. Six point two, develop a PK-12 system of interventions related to behavioral and mental health. We have good work begun on this, but as we talked at our most recent retreat, we know that we have to keep working on this. As we keep working on six-five, which is helping our staff, students, and parents understand substance abuse, mental health, and behavior needs. We have a resource guide by the end of the year, and we have collaboration on this, but I'm not sure we'll ever solve it, but we know it's still an important issue. And under seven point four, technology, we said we would implement innovative, technology-based learning experiences for students to do all sorts of things. We have completed that by Dave's leadership. We've come up with grade level expectations in every grade on what teachers should do. We're monitoring it. You might hear about it again in a minute. And finally, expand, we said for this year, expand the number of portable computing devices at pre-K2. And early adopter classrooms were identified, and they all had devices equal to their enrollment. So in a nutshell, that's what we worked on this year. Most important for our tonight is what should we do for next year? And before I tell you what we should do, I want to tell you how we got to these recommendations. All administrators at our general administrator meeting in May evaluated our work on each of those 13 teams and indicated which ones of those they thought we were succeeding at, or which of those needed more help. All administrators in May also went through the entire strategic plan and identified plans that we could bring forward to you to say, we think these are the plans that we need to work on. At the end of the day, there were 18 that were identified in some way, shape, or form. We brought all of that data back to our administrative team last week on Thursday and Friday. Dr. Morello was there with us. She shared your words to her about we probably need to focus more instead of doing more, less, maybe more. And so for a while during that meeting, we talked about maybe bringing you two plans. Here's the two plans we're going to work on next year, or three plans. Here's the three plans we're going to work on, but down here, we say something about the fact that we know we have to be dedicated to our strategic plan because a lot of people were involved in that, so we thought we can't stop at three. So I am going to present to you tonight the consensus of the entire administrative team with Dr. Morello in the room, and she kept saying to me, I don't want to make them pick what I want, but I think we got to the point that we were satisfied with where they landed. So these are the eight, not 18, not 13, not 29, plans that we're going to recommend that we work on for next year, and you will see some that you're seeing this year because we think this is where our focus should be. Eight of them. Number one, we need to focus, one point one, focus professional development on instructional practices to help improve and strengthen our classroom instruction. We just need to do better. We want to do this, even though we know it's been a focus for the last two years. The administrative team felt that these words were really the best way that we could focus on improving instructional, universal instruction. We looked at all 29, I think, plans, and they said, this is where we're going to get the best bang for the buck. So that's the first one. Second, oh, I have a little picture on each of them. Forgot that. Second, increase district-wide family engagement. Doing that in one compartment doesn't make sense, so the administrative team said very clearly, this should not just be under the auspices of the Student and Family Services Department. They can't go into a room over there and figure out, how are we going to increase family-wide engagement? We need to have teaching and learning, stress to all of our teachers when we hire them, that family engagement is really important. The Department of Education now grades us on how well we think we engage families, so we absolutely should keep it as a focus. Dr. Morello said to us, don't drop things that you've been working on unless they're done, so we know this isn't done. Three, we know. Three, we know we did not do as well as we have to do in order to have our citizens be legislative advocates for the future. So we are pushing forward that we want to have very serious work on developing an informed legislative group of advocates that can be in the legislature. We are told that educators show up when you're talking about education, and noneducators are there all the time. We're also told that whenever they see me coming, they know what I'm going to say. They need to have teachers, parents, community members talking to them instead of just educators. So this is something we think we have to work at. Dr. Morello talked about instances in which, in her own community, once we got some things, we call them educational savings accounts, they are on the cusp of being passed in Iowa, that absolutely can affect a school district. So we need to be there to help. Four, implement an administrative evaluation tool or system that includes feedback from supervised employees. We have had this on our strategic plan. We have never put it forward because we were waiting for the Department of Ed to get their work done at the state level. We're still waiting on that. We have an administrator, Kim Kazmercheck, who serves on that committee, but Dr. Morello pushed us to say, "We need to look at this, and we also need to look at evaluation system for teachers." So that's what this encompasses. Five, you heard really good work about how we're doing to talk about post-secondary educational attainable. We said it was, what was the word?
Inescapable.
Inescapable. Well, we're going to push that down to 5.3. This is a new action plan we have not implemented before, but it seems like the next step in working to the Strategy 5 directive to improve and measure students' college and career readiness. Under six, this one you see now, because we know we are not done, and we always hear issues about how well we're dealing with children's behavioral and mental health. It is somewhat related to how well we're dealing with substance abuse issues in the district. These two, 6.2 and 6.5, are not just Council Plus issues. These are issues in Iowa and across the country, but we know we're not done with our work. We've done some good preliminary work this year, but we have to work on this, and we have to not have this be, "Oh, by the way, we're working on it." This has to be front and center. And under 7.4, this has been done in the last year. We really came up with the grade level expectations, but we thought this really matched our 1.1, which was focusing our professional development on how to improve instruction. And we can't have technology in a class of its own, so this one really mirrors 1.1. So those would be our eight, just so you see them again. I'm going to tell you what they are. Focus teacher professional development on instructional practices, increase family engagement, nurture, develop legislative advocates, implement and evaluation, and perhaps teacher evaluation tool, develop post-secondary culture and start it earlier than high school or middle school, develop a system of interventions for mental health, behavior, and the next one, having to do with substance abuse, and use technology to help our kids be more successful. So those are the eight plans, not 13, not 18, not 29, that we're suggesting for next year. So, to answer the question of, "Okay, so what haven't you looked at yet in the strategic plan?" I thought I should tell you that tonight. I have a reason for doing this. We have not officially implemented these plans. However, I think you'll see that we have done some work that's around the parameters of these. We have a statement that says we will redesign our methods of communicating to parents, students, and community. We do that every year, we just have not officially implemented that strategy. 1.6, refine literacy intervention services in middle school and high school. We continue to push that forward. We have not officially said that's one of the ones we're working on, but it comes out of the work of teaching and learning. 1.8, design and implement a systemic tiered PK-12 intervention system for math. We are going to be looking at math in different ways in the next school year, but we want to stay away from, "What are our interventions?", and instead go back to the universal instruction. What are we doing for all kids? Have we kind of done that? We have kind of done that. In all sorts of ways, we have just never said that increasing school spirit is one of the things we're going to report to you on an ongoing basis. 2.6, promote new and current advanced and specialized education opportunities. We really do that. We've just never upped this to the level of reporting it to you quarterly. What has not been addressed, 4.5, a social atmosphere to enhance relationships. We've toyed around the edges about that, but we haven't officially put this on our docket. 6.3, school-based community access points to implement behavior and mental health services, and very similar, school-based community access points to work on substance abuse. We're working on those topics, but we haven't gotten down to this level. So those are the things that we have not addressed, but I want to assure you, we have not dropped them. They are on our radar, and we're working on them, even though they aren't in the number that we report to you annually. What has been addressed, but in an alternate method, is 7.6, expand the number of portable computing devices available in grades PK2. Dave Fringer and his lead team really worked on this last year with a plan of bringing it to the forefront for this year. Two things have kept us from doing that. This says all pre-K through second graders would be, would have a device. First of all, budget. Secondly, we don't know if it's such a good idea, because at pre-K through 2, they're not all going to be using them at the same time. So Dave and his team have come up with a plan that says there will be four devices, three devices, for every pre-K through 2 classroom for next year. And we think that's a very viable option instead of doing it specifically. So what are the next steps I would recommend as I waltz out of here? There's eight plans to work on for next year. That's certainly a boatload of work to do, and we think those are the really important eight plans to work on. Eventually, I would recommend that you and the incoming superintendent develop a plan and timeline to review and revise the current plan, or begin anew. The plan should be, according to the gentleman that led us the last time, should be reviewed about halfway through. This would be a good time to review it, but I think it's probably a good time for me to step back and you guys to figure out what your next step is. But again, we wanted to get to the point that it was kind of wrapped up, and you've got something to work on. I'm telling you what we haven't done specifically and what we have done, and I would be glad to answer any questions before I show you my last two slides. I didn't think so. So, I like to always end with, "What is our mission?" Our mission is to guarantee students graduate with knowledge, skills, and character. My favorite picture from this school year, Diane took that. We've submitted that nationally. I think it's going to be published nationally by the National Superintendent's Roundtable. But not to be looking at just one school, we have a similar picture from our other school of Abraham Lincoln children being very happy. We hope that the graduates this year, don't know that percentage yet, people whisper some things to me, but we hope that they all are graduating with the knowledge, skills, and character they need to be successful. That's all that our strategic plan is about, so. Are there any questions? Is that my last report?
Yes.
I think that's your last report. Thank you. And now we move on to the resolution portion of the meeting. Our first resolution, the approval of agreement with West Central Community Action Head Start Program. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2017-2018 agreement with West Central Community Action Head Start Program for contracted preschool services as presented.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion? Sing Nung, Dean?
Mr. LaFurla? Yes. Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. Motion is approved. Now we have approval of the 28E agreement with Children's Square, Children's Center for Preschool Services. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the 2017-18-2018 agreement with Children's Square, Children's Center for Preschool Services as presented.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Dean?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the agreement is approved. And I have approval of a 28E agreement with Council Plus YMCA for preschool services. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2017-18-28E agreement with the Council Plus YMCA for preschool services as presented.
Thank you, Susan. Is there a second?
Second.
Could Jill, any discussion on this motion? Sing Nung? Please go.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion is approved. And I have approval of the Council of Community School District's 28E consortium agreement. Is there a motion?
Move approval of Council Plus Community School District's 28E consortium agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this agreement? All right, Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And now we have on here, approve a website accessibility voluntary resolution agreement. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the voluntary resolution agreement as presented.
Thank you, Susan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion on this resolution?
Mind me again who caused us to do this?
The Office of Civil Rights stated that our website had some areas in which individuals with handicapping conditions could not access them as well as individuals without handicapping concerns.
And our proposal will meet that now.
Our proposal is, according to our attorney, our proposal is a self, we're going to address it, we're going to have an auditor that looks at it, and we're going to address it. And these complaints have been issued across the country. Evidence is that they're coming from a small group of people, but we need to adhere to it, and this will allow us to do it in a reasonable fashion instead of all at once.
It's a problem Mr. Fringer can easily solve.
Well, Diane is the one that's going to be solving it. Mr. Fringer may be in an accompanying role.
Very good. Any further discussion? Oh, Dean?
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and that agreement is approved. And I have approval for requests for a waiver to our district busing policy, and Mr. Kazire had asked to speak on this.
Since I was the board member that asked to have this placed on the board agenda, I felt that I needed to explain myself. I'm sure you all received communications from a parent that was concerned about open enrolling in the district to a different school. And as I felt her, as I'm empathetic for her concerns and the challenges that she has had, has going forward, I felt that this is something possibly that we should discuss. And then after consultation with Mr. Arthur and Dr. Bruckner, it came to the conclusion that this isn't necessarily the forum in which we should be discussing this. As we heard earlier, our curriculum audit says that we need to have a comprehensive board policies that we adhere to. So going on that point also, part of Robert's Rule of Order states that we need to refrain from speaking adversely on prior action not pending. So I'm afraid that discussion may lead to despairing remarks or adversely speaking about a previous decision that the board had made concerning a school. Also, I will not be bringing forth this motion because, as Robert's Rule of Order also states that a speaker can, or a motioner cannot speak against his own motion. And unfortunately, I would be speaking in opposition of this motion, so therefore, I am not going to bring this motion before the board at this time. And I'm sorry that I have made these errors, but I felt that, at the time, I felt that it was something that needed to be addressed. But through consultation and discussions with Dr. Bruckner, Dr. Bruckner and her administrative team has been working very hard to make accommodations for this parent, and it is my opinion that they've done what they've needed to do, and that for us as a board to discuss a waiver for this situation is not best for our board and board superintendent team.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to bring this request?
Before we bring up the motion, has the parent arrived for public?
No, but I mean, that's...
The parent did not arrive, and I think the doors were locked.
Eventually.
Okay, but she may have changed her mind, too, so I don't know. She did not arrive. We've been looking for her.
All right, I just wanted to verify that before we decide whether or not to make the motion.
Is someone willing to bring this motion forward? Okay. Now we move on to motion on approval of prices for reduced-priced lunches for 2017-2018. Is there a motion?
I move that the district allows students who qualify for free reduced-price lunches to eat for free, with the cost of lunches being paid for by non-federal funds.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there discussion on this?
I might just say thank you to Virginia Bectall, who is here, and welcome to Lisa Stewart, Lisa Wave, who is going to be taking over the duties in nutrition services. Virginia consistently tries to find ways to meet the needs of our students, and in this case, she and our staff were spending lots of time chasing after a very small amount of money for people who are on reduced-price lunches. And so she researched it and has come to the conclusion that her department can use non-federal funding in order to pay for that, which would make the life of those families easier. So whatever you vote, board, I want to first say thank you to Virginia and best wishes to Lisa.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
I have a question that just, actually just popped into my head since I'm sitting here looking at you. Because I still occasionally get the school bucks announcements, which is an account you put the money into, and that's where, how they pay their lunches. And there's still money in there. Is that still active and they can put? Because I know my high school at one point in time was dipping into that to get snacks, and that's still an active account that they're still able to get out of and will carry with them in case they want to go above and beyond what they already get for no cost.
In 11 of our schools, right, children eat for free, but if they want to have extras or something special, they can use the same system? Do you want to address it, or did I answer it? We want to give you a reason for being here, Virginia.
And one last opportunity.
We can't let you go.
Thank you.
Any money that's left in a student's account at the end of the school year is their money that rolls over to the next year, just like the debt. If they have any debt at the end of the school year, that rolls over to the next year as well. So any of the CEP schools, students want to purchase something at TJ, they can do so at the snack bar, buy an extra milk or extra piece of pizza or whatever, that's fine. What this will do for the reduced family, again, if they have money in their account, and it's an elementary student, and they don't usually get an extra milk, then that, the parent can request a refund. So if they want that money back, or if they want it moved to another student's account...
That's going to be my next question.
Yeah, you can do that also, so we can move it from account to account. They just need to call our office, and we can do that easily enough. So, and what this will do for us is, again, it's about 200 students, it relieves those families that apply through a meal application and qualify as a reduced family, that they would, in our family, that they would, in our bookkeeping, they'll come up as a reduced student, but they'll owe zero. And when we file a claim with USDA, we will ask for the reduced reimbursement for that meal. So that will be the only federal and state money that we get then. So then we will look at other ways that we earn non-federal money to pay for those meals then, and I feel very comfortable in the budget that we have, those non-federal funds available to do that, so.
Thank you.
Virginia, let me clarify. This is not retroactive.
No.
So if people have been receiving reduced meal, reduced-price meals, and they owe you some money, they still owe some money?
Yes, they do. I do not have, I don't have the power or the law or regulation that I can change that. So they still owe the money to the school district.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the waiver. Can I recall, we've had, we've requested this waiver not to raise our lunch, our meal prices for a few years now? And I'm just worried that perhaps next year they wouldn't approve our waiver, or they would require a greater increase in our meal prices? And this worry is not something about which we should really be concerned. Is that your opinion?
Well, I'm always worried because of the federal government and what they're looking at and looking to change or do away with or whatever. So I try to deal with what's here and now and how we can deal with this particular school year. And so if we, we have acknowledged the fact that we have 11 schools that are C E P, four that are not. So to try and be fair to the other families in our school district, we try to find ways to decrease the cost for them so that their kids can eat lunch, because we have really, really good participation in all of our schools. So we want to continue that or increase it if we possibly can. So by asking for the waiver, we have a certain amount, 10 cents is the most that we can raise prices at one time. That is a part of USDA's regulation, so that would be the most if we decided we needed. Most of the time in past years, it's been maybe four or five cents that we've increased the prices by if we felt we needed to. Again, I'm pretty sure when you look at the final audit that we will be okay as far as finances go and that we can withstand the waiver. There's some criteria the state looks at when they decide if they will give us a waiver or not, and one of those is that we have at least three months' worth of working capital in our account, which we have. So I don't think it'll be a problem for them to do that. And as you all know, when you go to the grocery store, the price of food keeps going up, but we keep trying to plan around that, and we so far have been successful at doing that. I'm sure that Lisa will follow that as well, and she's very capable of doing that. So I think we'll be fine.
Very good. Thank you. There's no further discussion? Dean, go ahead and please call a roll.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the reduced-price lunch pricing is approved. Now we have approval of new job description for Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Is there a motion?
Move to approve new job description for Executive Director of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion on this or questions? Singun, Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the new job description is approved. And we have approval of changes to various job descriptions. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the changes in job descriptions for superintendent and principal as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Is there any discussion on these changes?
Don't worry.
I know, it's just a new one.
These are just adding some statements from the curriculum audit about responsibilities of these positions, and they're responsibilities that you would be doing, but they were not officially in this job description.
So things we didn't hold Martha to. That's right. If there's no discussion?
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the job description changes are approved. Now we have approval of identification of teacher high-need designation for 2017-2018. Is there a motion?
Move approval of identification of teacher high-need designation for 2017-2018.
Thank you, Jill. Is there a second?
I second that.
David, is there any discussion on this motion?
I might just let people in the back row know what it is we're talking about here. This is to classify special education teachers, both regular special education and special education teachers in specialized programs, to have a hiring bonus for two years as presented for regular special ed teachers. It's $1,000 a year for each of the first two years. And for special education teachers in specialized programs, it's $1,500 for each of those two years. I appreciate Mr. Hanson, who brought to my attention that the best way of doing this is to use Article 14-1E, which makes this possible. So that's where this came from. It was a recommendation of our lead team because we tend to often, not this year, thanks to Toby, often start our school year with special education positions not filled, and this will help us in the future have a bonus, so.
Very good. Any questions or discussion from the board? Dean, please call a roll.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the teacher high-need designation is approved. Now we have approval of change in employee leave protocols. Is there a motion?
We need a motion and a second to discuss this, or?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommended changes to the leave protocols for district employees.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd be glad to start.
Please.
When we negotiated an additional years contract with C B E A, we asked for, and I was one that pushed it, the ability to change the Article 16, which has to do with leave. The C B A approved that, you approved that. The reasons, there are several reasons for it. Our leave policy has, is complicated, but there were two main reasons that made us push for it. First of all, employees have 15 days of sick leave. By law, we have to give 12 days in the first year, and it moves up to 15. But our policy did not allow teachers to use that for leave for sick children. Many other U E N districts allowed that. We did not. We did allow leave for sick children or sick family members under emergency leave. We provided 10 days of emergency leave. Only three of those could be used for children who are sick or family members, close family members who are sick. So we had not only a challenge in tracking that, but we had lots of people who would say to me in all sorts of meetings, to the point that I said, "I don't want to talk about leave anymore," that we were forcing employees to lie because if they had sick children at home and they had used their three days, they had to say they were sick. And we do not want to force people to lie, and our board has consistently talked about best place to work issues. So we want to rectify that. Secondly, we have a problem now, I think it's a problem, I think a lot of people think it's a problem, of we provide two days of personal leave, and it's take it or leave it. If you don't use it by the end of the school year, by the blackout period, you don't have it anymore. And so what we have had in the last 10 years, because I remember I came here in April and talked to principals who were dealing with people that were taking their leave in the last month, six weeks of school, because if they didn't take it, they lose, they lose it. And so we had more and more opportunities to have classrooms without qualified subs. So we wanted to solve that problem. We think we solved those problems by the changes that you have in front of you. We have stated that you still have 15 sick days, but 10, up to 10 of those you can use for family care leave if you need to. Now, if you're a parent with sick, with children at home, young children at home, you certainly can use them. If you use them, they count against your sick leave, which is not, we've been cautioned by the board not to just give more and more leave. But I think it solves that problem. Secondly, for leave, we've never allowed people to carry it over, so now we're saying you can carry it over. So if I don't use personal leave this year, my two days, I could carry it over to next year where I could have four days. And you know what? If some really important emergency came up in my life, there's four days I would have the next year. We say it's bankable up to five. We have some parameters around it. We want you to tell us in advance if you're going to use more than three, et cetera. We think this solves the problem of everybody who have this mad dash in May to use them, because if you're wise, you bank those days in case you might need them. Now, I realize you're going to get to the point that you have five banked. You still might have two there. Do you use them or lose them? We're going to trust that we're all going to work together on this. In looking at bereavement leave, we recommended three days of bereavement leave per episode or per need. We left in 16.1, which talks about discretionary leave, and we think that solves the problem. Because at the district's discretion, as Mrs. Brown pointed out, we may give additional leave. But in conversations with representatives of our association, and I'm looking over here, we recommit keeping teachers visibly and meaningfully involved in the process of change. It has been brought to our attention that perhaps that sounds more fierce than it might be, because when I explain to people, you know what? That discretionary leave will solve the problem you're talking about, that's not necessarily in black and white. So as of this afternoon, we came up in a collaborative effort with some wording that increases it, as Mrs. Brown talked to you, that says, "In the event of the death of an employee's spouse, legally recognized domestic partner, parent, child, or stepchild, up to five days, doesn't have to be five days, up to five days of bereavement leave will be provided per incident. In the event of the death of employee's grandparent, grandchild, sibling, stepparent, parent-in-law, sibling-in-law, up to three days." We are recommending taking out consecutive calendar days, just because we would never have implemented it in the way that it was described, but I know there was a fear. I'm also recommending in this alteration to take out the fact that it has to begin with the date of death or a memorial system, because when my dad died, I took two days here, I came to work for two days, and then I took two more days. Sometimes that works. It's, we've left in employees may be required to provide documentation to verify date of death. And we've, in this recommendation, taken out no compounding of leave will be permissible. I want to make the point, we think, and Toby, Reese, and her department, and her lead team, and Dean Wilson in finance, and I have worked very diligently on trying to make this be a good thing. We think the one we proposed to you was really a positive plan, but we're willing to say that maybe this bereavement leave, this language, may be more representative of what we hopes happens. So I'm just putting it out there. You don't have to take our proposal, or you don't have to take the altered change. You're the Board of Education. You can certainly tell us what you'd like to do. But I wanted you to know that that was the background to the changes in front of you. If you're willing to answer any questions.
Have the, have the C B E A members had an opportunity to review this document so that we would be able to?
Great question.
Make, make a decision tonight, or is this something that we need to allow those members of our teachers' union to allow time to look at that?
Great question. When we approved the resolution that you approved, we said the district gets the opportunity to change, but we would collaborate with the C B A. C B A was aware of the proposal that came before you tonight. This proposal is more beneficial to them. Their president, past president, has said to me unofficially, he thinks this will relieve the worries of some of their members. But as far as sitting down and talking about it, no. But they don't have to approve whatever you approve, and as long as we are giving more rather than taking anything back, I'm very confident that they would be in support. It's a good question.
Okay. I have a question regarding the 16.1, in which it states, "The board may, at its discretion, grant the leave." If one of our people were to request the leave under this, would that require an actual board meeting with a motion, or does, would superintendent on behalf of the board?
We have interpreted it that the Human Resources Department brings it to the superintendent, and the superintendent can make that adjustment. So this year, when we had the tragic case, we made that adjustment this year. So we don't think it needs to come to the board specifically. Good question.
You had mentioned for the emergency leave, it's 10 days, but in here it says two.
In the current policy, emergency leave was 10 days, but it's pretty much spelled out, it says you can use three for childcare, you can use three for adoption, you can use, this is the current policy I'm talking about, the current policy. You can use one for the funeral of someone who's, you're not closely related to, and you can use others for some sort of natural catastrophe. When, in the policy we present you tonight, emergency leave does not count for bereavement leave because it's in a classification of its own. That emergency leave is trying to deal with something that we don't think is covered under sick leave, or family care leave, or personal leave, or bereavement leave, so.
Such as a tornado hitting your house or something?
Yeah. And again, if a tornado hits your house and your house is gone, you have two days right there. If you have three personal days, you can use those. If that's not enough, then we can go to discretionary leave. I think one of the things that we, I've said kind of firmly is, you can't just keep personal leave days for, that's, I'm going to go just have a good time. Personal leave days are supposed to help you solve some of these life issues that we run into, so.
So you could use, if you felt you needed more leave for bereavement, you could use your personal days there also.
Absolutely, you could. Which is another reason that we're trying very hard. They all kind of work together. We're trying to say, don't use them at the end of the year just because they're there because you might be able to use it, you might need them next year.
I think that when the original, I don't remember when we first started discussing this, but it was positive. You know, we thought it was positive, so I think the changes just make this a stronger, a stronger offering to our employees. We want to, we want them to know we care about them and want the bachelor families, so.
I like this change. I think it's good. Good improvement. And I agree with you. I mean, I find it hard if teachers would disagree. This is more days than the current policy you're recommending, correct?
Yeah.
Right, and we've added up to, we're not, I mean, some people, their dear 96-year-old grandmother passes away, they may not, and lives in Omaha, they probably won't take three days, but...
We don't know.
96-year-old grandmother may live in Timbuktu, and we don't know.
We don't know.
They're in charge of it.
We don't know.
That's true.
Giving them the opportunity to be able to use those days by discretion.
And it's, we can't write a policy that's going to meet every single need, but we think, we think this sends the message that you're trying to send, and we think the discretionary leave helps us be able to solve those problems that are not covered here.
The other question I would have, or just clarification, this would be a board policy. It's not a part of the teacher contract anymore.
No, it is as of now. It's part of the teacher contract.
I understand that, but given what the legislature did this year, in two years, this could be.
Yes.
And if we don't like it then, like any other policy, we can change it.
Correct.
Which I think gives us more flexibility often.
Or I will give the opportunity for us to get it right the first time. Or I will give the opportunity for us to get it right the first time. And what I will do at this time is I will make a motion to table the item for the next meeting for further study.
Table the item. Is there a?
See if anyone wants to come with me.
We need a second.
Yeah, is there a second?
Need a second. Is there a second? I'm sorry, that's your job.
Yeah. Is there a second on Susan's?
And so we don't have any direct input regarding the change to bereavement?
Are you asking, would the?
Would not required.
I know we're not required. I know we're not required, but...
I know.
Did this change?
Well, just to the change in general.
The, there, there was involvement. A representative of CBA, CBA communicated with several people on behalf of an individual teacher. That individual teacher communicated with us. The president, I don't know if he's president or past president, who happens to be back there, communicated about it. There was, there was belief that generally speaking, our policy was a positive change. There was some question about bereavement leave, and the fact that three days seemed harsh. So we attempted to try to rectify that in an effort to be responsive.
What other information do you need, Susan? I guess I'm curious why we need to postpone it.
I, I would, you know, I, there's a lot of information to read over the weekend, and I didn't get a chance to look at this until yesterday.
I see, okay.
And I was up till 3 o'clock in the morning, and I'm trying to read what the other policies are, what the old one was. I didn't start emailing you until, you know, like 11 o'clock today, because I had to go through and read the other one. I, I just like the chance or the opportunity to, to, to make sure that we're doing it right. You know, what are the other policies in the industry? Are we truly doing, what other institutions are doing this, and are we using best practices? You know, I know we can change it in a couple of years, but...
I want you to know that we did research with multiple other school districts. I mean, I understand the, the suggestion you're making. It's the last meeting in June, the next meeting is not till the last meeting in July, and teachers, if we table it, teachers not only don't know what bereavement leave is, but they don't know what any leave is.
Right.
And they very specifically wanted a decision. They wanted to know what their leave would be before they finished school. And we told them, this was what we were proposing, and invited them to come to the meeting, and they're here. I know it's not really appropriate for us to ask them what they think, but they could smile if they think it's a good idea.
Is there, I guess I'd like to ask, is there a second on her motion to table this? Or do we feel that there is enough here?
Giving the option to table?
Okay, so I'd say there's not?
Well, although, I would actually like a slight alteration to the 16.1 to say the Board or Superintendent may...
Can't change that, Scott. It's a contract.
That's contract?
16.1's a contract, is it not? CBA?
We can change all of Article 16.
Yeah, I think we can.
It's part of Article 16.
We can change all of Article 16. Okay.
Yeah, it's all about leave. Yeah, we can change all of Articles.
Because in essence, you're, you're giving her authority to do it, even though it says the Board has authority.
Either the Board or Superintendent may at...
Or designate.
Basically, I, I don't want our teachers and other employees to look at that and say,
"The Board is the one who needs to make this decision to do it." And so that means we need to, you know, make it seem like it's this complicated thing, because we are interpreting it that the Superintendent...
Well, and that would have been my assumption as well, is, I didn't hear about that, but I'm assuming that's what it is for the discretionary part, so.
So did Scott make, did Scott make a motion to change 16.1 to say?
So let me just back up. I'm, I'm just shared this bereavement thing.
We need, we need a motion to amend.
So you could, yes.
Need a motion to amend.
So can we amend it all in one, though?
All in one.
I move to amend the leave policy as presented by Dr. Brechner.
Are you including the?
I'm going to go to Scott's line.
And including Scott's line, yes.
There we go. Is there a second?
I will second that amendment.
There we have a first and a second. So let's, if there's no discussion, can we take a roll call on the amendment?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the amendment is approved. Now we need, we have a first and a second on the contract. Is there any further discussion? Dean, please call the roll.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the employee leave protocols changes are approved. And now we have a policy review approval, a first reading of Policy 213 Legal Counsel. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading of Policy 213 Legal Counsel as presented.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Kazire.
Could be Mr. Kazire. And is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, Dean?
Ms. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the recommended changes to the Board approval for the appointment of attorneys is approved. Now we have approval of our consent agenda, which includes quite a few business items, approval of student fees, approval of public records fees, substitute teacher rate of pay, membership in the MOEC, approval of contract with Promise Partners, pardon, early childhood board, and approval of memorandum of understanding with CHI Health, Clear Minds, Family Connections, Full Circle, Heartland Family Services, and Transitional Services of Iowa, along with personal action, claims, and accounts. Is there a motion?
Move approval of our consent agenda as professionally presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott, is there any discussion? Are we sure we want to enter into this MOEC agreement with the leadership here? There's always one in the bunch.
You got a pick on her as she goes out the door.
Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, and we are adjourned.